Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we take roll, please?
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Datzl.
Here.
Mr. Yosomoro.
Here.
Mr. Peasort.
Here.
Mrs. Datzl.
Here.
Okay, first up on the agenda is legislative updates.
I don't have anything to do to report to the committee.
Okay, Todd, you have anything?
I do not, they're out of session.
And Butler Tech updates?
Yeah, just our board meeting is tomorrow night and Mr. Graff will make a presentation on the tier that they want to try and start back to school and it looks like some type of A B schedule, but I'll have more info on that at our next meeting.
Great, okay, thank you. Heather, were there any submissions for employee organization comments or questions?
Yes, there was, I had one. This is from Susan Dayton. She is at Taylor Elementary and a physical education teacher. Dear Mr. Bowling and the Board of Education, the COVID-19 pandemic has dramatically changed how our schools operate and has illuminated the need to prioritize students' safety, health, and well-being. As school leaders work to create a new instructional model for the 2020-2021 academic year, we must consider students' physical, mental, and social-emotional health above all else. And an important part of the solution must be a health and physical education. During this global health crisis such as this, during a global health crisis such as this, developing physically literate and health-literate students is more important than ever. Health education is where students develop the ability to assess, understand, appraise, apply, and advocate for health information and services in order to maintain or enhance their own health and health of others. In physical education, students develop the ability to move with competence and confidence in a variety of physical activities and multiple environments that benefit the healthy development of the whole person. These skills will help our students navigate their new reality, not only during the pandemic, but in the future as well. Health and physical education educators are on the front lines of the social and emotional learning. And preparing for school reentry, incorporating SEL, will be essential to best support our students, both health and physical education instruction naturally reinforced and aligned with Castle's core cell competencies by teaching students skills like teamwork, self-awareness, responsible decision-making, stress management, problem-solving, and goal-setting. These skills help support students' health, well-being, resilience, and make health and physical education especially important right now during the COVID-19 pandemic. Our schools also play a vital role in ensuring children and adolescents get the nationally-recommended 60 minutes of physical activity each day, yet due to the COVID-19, student access to school-based physical education and physical activity have been greatly limited due to school park and playground closures. Compounding these concerns, low-income students, students with disabilities, and students of color historically lack access to safe places to play, physical activity equipment, and physical education instruction delivered by a certified physical educator. It's because of these realities that our schools must offer physical education and health education as part of a well-rounded education for all students, regardless of whether we will be providing in-school learning, distance learning, or using a hybrid learning approach. SHAPE America, which stands for the Society of Health and Physical Educators, has released guidance titled "School Reentry Considerations: K-12 Physical Education, Health Education, and Physical Activity," which is intended to guide administrators, staff, and teachers in preparing an environment for safe and supportive instruction. The document clearly shows the health of physical education can be conducted safely in all models of learning and will be a vital to our students' school experience this year and beyond. As the American Academy of Pediatrics explicitly stated in their Guides for School Reentry, it is also critical to maintain a balanced curriculum with continued physical education and other learning experiences rather than an exclusive emphasis on core subject areas. As you can see, focusing on whole-child education through health and physical education instruction really is important for our students now more than ever. It's time to prioritize health and physical education, the well-being of our students depends on it. Thank you for your time and consideration. It's the only one we received.
Any comments or questions? Thank you, Susan, for submitting that. Any community communications?
I receive none.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, 11.1, approval of superintendent consent items.
Yes, under personnel items, you will see the resignation of our Colrain Middle School Principal Elizabeth Stiles, and she will be moving to Princeton to take on a curriculum position. You will see our other resignations and/or retirements. You will also see the approval of an interim principal for Colrain Middle School, Ali Moore, comes to us from Princeton. And you will see extended day of service contracts for Ali and David Meadows, who is the assistant principal there, so they can start planning for the start of the school year with the changing of leadership. On other parts, you will see classified and certified resignations and hirings. Vendor contracts all meet the requirements of being budgeted for and being considered and using federal funds or what we had already planned in our own budget. You will see a final action on the calendar revision for the school year. Biggest difference is it starts the school year on the 27th instead of what we had talked about earlier in basically May or June about possibly September 1. It is now August 27th, and the reason it was changed is so we can provide safety and health training for our staff as they come back to school and prepare for our students. They also will need a lot of time preparing for collaboration so that if we, for any one time, have to go to full remote learning, we'll be able to because of planning and preparation. So with that being said, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the revised 2021 school calendar, and most importantly, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the superintendent consent items as listed.
Sumo. Second.
There's a motion and a second, are there any questions, comments? Oh, I had asked you this already, Todd, there were no internal candidates that were interested at Northwest High School that would have considered the middle school?
As we have talked, the resignation from the principal came in after July 10th, so if we want to follow our hiring plan and diversity plan, then we can't open that up to everyone we did. We were in the middle of making our $2.6 million in reductions when the Northwest High School positioned to open up, so that's why it went internal. And whether there is internal candidates or not, we want to follow our diversity plan and we want to open it up, and this way we will be allowed to because a higher revised code states that you cannot be let out of your contract by another district possibly after July 10th, and that's why we had the board meeting on the morning of July 10th.
Great, thank you. All right, so we'll go to vote.
And that's why it's an interim position.
All right, vote passes five to zero. Next on the agenda is adoption of fiscal consent items, Amy?
Yes, so for the fiscal consent items, it's the dispensing of and reading the June 29th regular meeting minutes and the July 10th regular meeting minutes. The June year-end financial reports, our all-funds balance was $47 million, our general fund unreserved balance is $25.5 million. We ended the year with $94 million in revenue, which was about 100% of our estimate, and $94 million of our expenditures, which is 98% of our estimate. With our year-end encumbrances of $1.3 million, that takes us to $95.6 million or $500,000 below our year-to-date estimate, which is about a half a percent below budget for the year. Our investment average weighted return is 1.8%, continuing to go down from the 2.24% that we saw at the beginning of last year in last August. And the monthly bills for June were our routine monthly bills as well as instructional materials, our fourth-quarter student and fiscal software, a repayment of a state safety grant that we were not able to utilize due to the pandemic, AP exam testing fees, and auxiliary payments for our non-public schools. So with that, I'd like, oh, and then we have den and now certifications, there was two invoices, one for lawn mowing and one for an electric bill that were over the $3,000 that need approval. So with that, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
Sumo.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any questions, comments? Vote passes five to zero. 14.1, accept the FY '20 final amended certificate?
So the Hamilton County Budget Commission has approved our final appropriations and submitted our final minute certificate at $201.6 million. With that, I'd like to ask the Board to accept the final minute certificate as approved by the Hamilton County Budget Commission.
There's a motion.
Sumo.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, are there any questions or comments, Rami? And that vote passes five to zero as well.
And finally, is the resolution approving the granting of a tax increment financing exemption? This is for the, to approve the resolution approving the granting of a tax exempt financing exemption for the North Ridge District at Sovereign Road and the compensation agreement that is a may-hole for the district. With that, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the resolution approving.
Sumo.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I got a question. Just wanted to make sure the developer is going, this goes through, is, these are single-family dwellings, not apartment buildings? Is that correct?
The resolution and the township has let us, notified us that it is a single-family dwelling they're submitting, and then I also watched the hearing for the township and no one showed up for their township hearing.
Okay.
I just wanted to, first of all, thank everybody, I know we all got probably 35 or 40 emails, so I'm glad this is working out that it will be single-family homes, but mostly I want to thank Amy for always looking out for what's best for the district and negotiating and keeping us whole on this tip, so thank you.
And to clarify, Amy, this is a residential TIF and not a commercial TIF, whereas it'd be a different TIF that we'd be approving if it was multifamily or commercial, correct?
Correct.
So, yeah, so the type of TIF that we're approving is for single-family homes.
Single-family home.
Right.
There you go.
I just want to agree with Pam, we received a lot of feedback, which I love to see the communities come to us with their opinions and thoughts and ideas because we may not have all the information, so it's nice for folks to contact each of the board members.
So we'll call for the vote. And that vote passes five to zero. Next on the agenda is curriculum instruction, remote learning?
Yeah, so in front of you, you have information only for a remote learning plan for Northwest Local School Districts. School districts around the state are required to turn in a remote learning plan in order to provide remote learning for the upcoming school year. This is a very in-depth document that has to look at every aspect of what remote learning should look like. It's very important to us because the equity of remote learning was not there last year, it was not equal for all students, so we are doing our best to make sure that this time it is, and there are official guidelines you have to follow in order for the state to do this. So what the basics of it is, is there is a 25-hour requirement and a two-and-a-half-hour requirement per week for 27.5, and it's based on school attendance requirements. High school students need to have an opportunity for at least 1,001 hours of schooling annually since our school calendar has less days this year, that works out to about 6.2 hours a day. We anticipate teachers having more daily contact with students, especially on the lower levels and through our middle schools and high schools. Middle schools and high schools will be given guidance by the counselors and administration on what courses they need to take. We have purchased seats to accelerate education for students in the Remote Learning Academy, and so they have assessments that are provided with them. And one of the big differences is last fall, it hit us so fast, we didn't really give grades for what we were doing. It was basically maintaining what they have. This time you will be graded, and you will be graded based on the mastery that you show in these programs, and that will be the same K-12. If the state requires us to shut down and go to full remote learning, we cannot put all students on accelerate education because they are a seat license that you must purchase. So when I talked about the calendar and the emphasis of coming back early prior to school starting and collaborating, they have been told to prepare for in-person instruction or a full shutdown going to remote learning. It becomes very difficult to plan for this, and a lot of the comments and feedback we've got is, I need more information on this to make a decision. Well, to remind everyone, July 2nd is when the governor waited to release the opening guidelines. By July 10th, we had released what the district guidelines were going to look like, and now we're July 20th and we've given everybody until July 30th to make a decision. Remote learning will look different, every child will have a Chromebook, but that doesn't do one any good if we don't have the Wi-Fi access that we've talked about and the equity gap that existed there for some families. But we will be changing the way we make contact with kids, making sure we're staying in touch, and we understand we've got to be flexible because some parents won't be home if we're ever shut down by the governor and have to go full remote, and will need access at different times in the night. But we have to be very conscientious of our staff, too. They can't get up and start at 7:00 a.m. in the morning and continue through nine at night, they have families to raise, they have things to do also. So we think this plan is the best of both worlds, but it is very concrete in terms of, if you sign up for it at the very beginning and remote learning is where you choose to go, it is much more rigor involved, it is based on what standards need to be covered prior to an assessment, and then at the end of quarter, you're expected to learn this much, perform this much, and you are required seat time on the computer. The other question that will come up is, what if they whiz through this? Well, sometimes that's not different than what they do in class, they go and move through pretty class. We do have the opportunity with this to open up other sections so students can keep advancing at a high pace and a good pace, but there is a much more, there is so much more rigor in this because it is computer-based that you're not waiting for somebody to send you something out. And there was some times last year when we closed down in March, April, they would do 10 hours, some would do 2.5, and the reality of it, some kids didn't get on at all even after we made contact at home. So we think this is a good way to go, it is something we've collaborated with the other districts, this is a negotiated price with the Remote Learning Academy that has been worked on by all of Hamilton County Curriculum Directors, and so it is a very common direction that we are going. So this is just for information, we will bring it back for final approval August 10th. Right now, it has been sent to the state, and the state has to approve it also, so if we have to make adjustments, and we know there will be some adjustments, they just came out with some attendance guidelines, and that's hours on task, checking in, teacher contact, and there's many things we're required to do that is vastly different from the way we ended last year.
Can I ask a question here? The 31st is the deadline, right?
July 30th.
July 30th, okay. What if, hypothetically, what if a family who says, well, you know, I'm going to send my kid to school, gets on the bus, whatever, and then says, I don't like this, I want to go to virtual?
Sure, and that's a very good possibility, so there's two things there. So the first thing is if you sign up for remote, it is a semester commitment because you can't go a week or a month on remote and then come back and expect to be at the same place in the classroom. They're going to move, they have their pacing guide, this has their own pacing guide. But to go the other way, that's going to be very difficult also. We don't, as a district, move kids from high school to high school or middle school to middle school because teachers are on different pacing guides, so to move, you really put yourself behind the eight ball. But yes, it is an option that if you come to school and then all of a sudden you're like, well, it's just not as safe as I want it to be, we will talk with you and try to work things out and see if we can fix problems, but there is that option to change to it. Once you do change to it, it's a semester commitment.
Okay.
But we will try to limit that as much as possible because the kids are really going to be behind when they do switch that way.
I would imagine, thanks to COVID-19 and the pandemic, we'll always have a virtual component of education moving forward, much larger than what?
That's interesting because I'm with you, I hope, because you like to meet the needs of all your community members, but with school choice and some other things, they may just let it last during the pandemic and then pull it away because there's a lot of questions about funding and attendance that you've got to monitor, so I hope.
How many have opted for the remote?
The last check I had, which was on July 15th, 72% of 1,000 would like to be in-person learning, and 27.5 would like to do remote learning. And out of all the kids who want to do in-person learning, only 55% want transportation, and obviously, we did not count high school because we do not provide transportation. So if you look at grade levels for remote learning, it's pretty equal, it's anywhere from 10 to 20, depending on what grade level you're in, so it's spread out pretty equal.
Is our plan similar to the plan, plans of other neighboring districts or other GNC districts?
It depends, Prokios, I'm pretty sure, are going back full in-session in-person learning, but other school districts, some are deciding to go full remote to start the year, but majority are doing what we're doing, either in-person or off-the-remote, because no matter what we think as an individual, people have different perceptions of this, and it makes it very difficult. And all I ask is that when the parents decide on remote or in-person, you've trusted us for all these years to take care of your kids and provide safe areas for them, that they consider that because parents need to work and our kids need our teachers, so.
Anything else?
So that'll be for information, and then we'll bring it back for action August 10th.
That leads into superintendent updates.
All right, so please stop me at any time when you have a question because I'd like to go over several things, mostly the reopening guidelines, but I would like to start today with our summer literacy program that started at Taylor, Struble, and Pleasant Run L. Had about 20 to 32 students at each building, about half at each school rode the buses there. During this plan, we went one per seat, that is different on the buses when we do the reopening guidelines, and I'll go over that. We did line the students up, and the different thing in summer school because we have less kids is that we did take temperatures, and then they were required to use the sanitizer, go between their hands, fingers, nurse went over all of them, and then they transitioned six feet apart, and they did an excellent job. The masks were not an issue for the kids whatsoever, they weren't pulling at them, they weren't tugging, they were standing in line nice and polite, but it's a lot easier when you have 30 than you have 900 coming into our big elementaries. But we are finding how things are working, teachers are practicing distancing and teaching and instructing, so if they are behind you when I go through the reopening plan, they're at a certain distance. Some teachers were wearing, they're all required to wear masks, but some were wearing a mask and a clear shield over top, so that is their choice also because the safety of our employees is very important. But for the first day, smiles on their faces eating breakfast, pancakes and syrup, and then having a warm lunch, it went very well, and we were very excited for the way things are going. Our teachers, we've asked that are working there, are following all our safety rules that Hamilton County approved, and they are journaling at the end of the day so we can take notes for the rest of our staff and look at things as we go. So any questions about the start of summer literacy or?
What grade level ranges are these?
It's three, four, and five, or second through five.
Okay.
All right, so the guidelines for reopening, so I'd like to start with what a typical day for our kids look like, and I just want to be flat-out honest to the folks because I know a lot of people are wanting to know exactly what it looks like, so I'll do my best to describe it, but also do my best to say we can't guarantee certain things. The one thing we can guarantee is we will transport kids. It could be two to seat, it could be three to seat. When the kid enters the bus, they must have a mask on, if they don't, the driver will hand them a mask. Now, that concerns me after talking to the supervisor of transportation, Bob Engel and Yolanda Palmer, because I don't think many people think about bus drivers. You've got a foot on the brake, as Bob says, you've got a hand on the steering wheel, and you've got a hand on the door pushing the button to open, or old-school this. You're watching kids at the stop, you're making sure traffic stops, now you have to check kids coming on the bus to make sure they have a mask. So it puts a lot on our bus driver's plate, but we want to simplify it, we're not going to have them do temperature checks because they can't, they have too many safety things, but they would stop and look at the kids as they pull up to the stop. We would, are requesting that an adult be there with them, but we understand the parents will be flying out to work, and that after day one, when they're taking pictures and everything else, the kids may be there by themselves, but if they don't have a mask, they will. We are going to try to load them back to front so you're not passing anybody as you come on the bus. The problem we run into is we need the community and everybody else to be very flexible with new enrollees. We're not going to get new enrollees on a bus in two or three days, because if you think about if you want to load back to front, you have to change the seating chart every time you get a new enrollee. So maybe the new kid moved at the beginning, and so we've got to find a seat that is safe, and we only transition one time. So it is going to take time to make those seating charts and get those things done. So as they arrive to school, they will dismiss front to back, so not passing each other. From there, they will enter the building, and they will then choose to go and get breakfast, however the school decides, whether it be part in the cafeteria or in the classroom. We are currently discussing what happens with the arrival to school. In our new buildings with the ELAs, our extended learning areas, and our larger classrooms, if you remember when we built them, they are larger than what's at Colrain L. and Colrain Middle and White Oak Middle, and sometimes Pleasant Run Middle. It is pretty easy to get close to six feet. We will do our best to make sure that each principal walks a room and the teachers to make sure the desks are six feet apart. There is no guarantee that we'll be exactly six feet apart because some of our rooms are not big enough for that. If you go back to what we're seeing and who's signing up for remote learning, we're expecting 25 to 30% to choose remote learning. So the enrollment at P R E is no longer 897, it might be 597. Makes it a lot easier to space as you do that. We will limit transitions as much as possible. Now, that's very easy in an elementary school because they don't change classes like our middle schools and high schools do. But when we do change, our schools are looking at arrows going down each side of the hall in Colrain to Northwest, this is the set of steps you use to go upstairs, this is the set of steps you use to go downstairs, so they are not passing each other. We have other options in high school where kids could change bells and go to a seven-bell day, but they might look at things like a six, five, or four bell day, it just depends on how many course requests there are, and this becomes the difficult part, and people are very upset and angry because I need to see the school plan because we put the district plan out, but we, each school is different, so we have to allow them to collaborate with their teachers and make their own plan. It's not easy because there's different sets of circumstances at each building. By today, some will be released, by tomorrow, some will, and then that's when the questions need to be answered and called the building. And some people are sending an email to me, which I love to answer, but they're saying, I don't want to talk to anybody else, just you. Well, what I have to do is I have to call each building, or Brenda does, or Destin does, or Darrell does, because they're going to be different in the way they give their guidance for what they're doing. The other thing I want people to send about and think about is the one thing we can't guarantee is who's teaching the class on that day. If we have a case of COVID and somebody's been sent home to be quarantined, then we will cover the class however we can. It might be a classified employee who is with those students all day, and the kids might for that day have to do remote learning just because we don't have enough staff. But that is an important piece that we need parents to understand. We will do our best to get subs in there, but if you think about it, subs will have to make a decision if they're coming back to work or not, and it's going to be very difficult for districts to get subs as we move forward.
Todd, what about, have you guys looked into, since you don't want to have kids change every hour, every bell, whatever, what, going back to the block scheduling where you're, you know, where you're not, where you're not changing as much?
Yeah, they're talking about the block schedule, 90-minute blocks that are not changing as much. The problem you get in high school is we will maintain through remote learning or in-person learning our CCP courses and our AP courses. So we still want those high offerings, but sometimes you've got to be in front of the teacher in order to do the rigor that's involved in a class, so they're still trying to look at both of those. So they're still trying to look at both of those.
Is the state, maybe this is for you. I know we have to be very careful that if we have a teacher that's not licensed to, you know, teach AP Biology or whatever, then that can actually fall back on you if you pay her or him. Is there going to be leeway with this?
Yeah, the state's given some leniency. It still has parameters, but if they've
I would think they have to.
They have. Daryl keeps on top of that. His weekly HR meetings discuss that with the state, and they are providing flexibility there. Mask for kids, all masks are required to wear, all children are required to wear masks. They can bring their mask from home. If they do not have one, we will supply one for them. Now you get into, if they forget it, yes, we will provide them. If they refuse to wear it, then we have a problem. We are requiring masks. And we will require masks. They will be put in an isolation room if they can't complete what we've advised them to do. And then we'll have a conversation with the parents and say, hey, we want to work with you. We want your kid to be in school, but in order to be in school, you have to wear a mask. Now, I've gotten some emails that will say, the mask is hard to breathe. And they'll say, I'll see you at board meetings, Todd, you're talking without it. Well, in the classroom, once kids are in their desk, they are allowed to take their mask off because of appropriate spacing.
When they get on the bus, Todd, do they have to wear a mask, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, here's the deal. What if you've got a kid that said, I'm not wearing a mask?
They'll have to make a phone call to the school, will have to get ahold of the parents, and they'll have to be picked up or they can't get on the bus, they have to have a mask.
Okay.
And that's why we're supplying them if they forget.
I've got a question for just, it'd be a good time, I think, to ask this.
Sure.
Clarified, because was it July 2nd when the governor came out with his guidelines for school? So explain the difference between the guidelines that he gave out and how we're doing things different than some of what he said.
Everything is different than what he said because he put no restrictions whatsoever on schools. He made recommendations only, but nothing that we haven't followed.
The only one as a mandate, if I'm not mistaken, was that teachers wear a mask.
Adults wear masks like they do in restaurants, yes. But for kids, I thought we were still talking about kids. He even said K through 1, they're not requiring it, but it's recommended.
He said under 10, I think, or something like that. But he also said that it's up to each individual district
Yes.
to have their mask policy and to set our own guidelines.
And we do have a mask policy that will be coming to you guys August 10th for final approval. And it has been collaborating with our attorneys, state officials, and local school districts on what it looks like.
Policy specific about masks?
Correct.
Go ahead.
I want to go back to some kids may be coming and walking around without masks. That is a possibility. So we have had discussions about lanyards that identify. But you have to be very careful about what you're allowed to identify and who. Because of asthma or other health conditions, some kids will not be able to wear a mask. So then we've got to decide what's the safest thing for our employees. Our employee's safety, as I will come back to many times here, is very important. So what situation is best for them in school or what might work in remote learning? But the bottom line is, we are a public school, and if they meet and decide that the kid needs to be in school but can't wear a mask, then we will provide different guidelines for that student while they're in school and try to make sure everyone is safe. But I don't want people to be shocked when, saw a kid without a mask today. Yep, that is a possibility. You might see a kid who's not practicing six feet. It's going to be pictures sent home. That's a possibility. Everybody loves to hide behind social media and put the pictures out there. It's going to happen, is all I'm saying. We will do our best, we will preach it, we will practice it, we will enforce it. But there's a lot more kids in a building than there are adults. But we are doing our best to make sure six feet, limit transitions, and you've got to have a mask on. We'll have adults who won't have a mask on because they might meet with Daryl, they might have a doctor's note that says, due to ADA conditions, I cannot wear these. And that will be something that will be apparent also, that parents might see. You know you're going to get, Mom, look at my teacher, he or she doesn't have a mask on. There could be a reason for that, and when the parent calls up to complain, we can't tell them what that reason is. It's against higher revised code to release that information. At this time, we don't know how many schools, how many students will attend school versus remote. This is only 1,000 out of 9,000. So as we get more information, and I'm not shocked, I am getting great questions from parents. It's awesome. We're trying to give them the best guidance we can because there is no wrong or right decision here. If you're comfortable with your kid coming to school, then send them to school. If you're not, there's nothing wrong with that. I do want to make it clear, if we're allowed to have sports, music, anything else, you can have remote learning and you still can participate with your team. There is no regulation that stops that. So we've had that question a lot.
Todd, can I stop you a second?
Yes.
So they could, we all have had, I'm sure we all go out and get questions from people like, hey, what's the rollout going to be? Where should we send questions to, to you, to Lindsay?
Myself, Lindsay, Daryl, Brenda, we all collaborate together, and we're all making sure. Because we're putting an FAQ together of questions that come. So once we have that FAQ, then we're going to start releasing it on the website daily and updating as we go.
And then would that go out on social media as well so that folks?
An attachment where they can go to our website.
Awesome, thank you.
Because there is no bad question.
Is that going to be, I mean, just off the top of my head, if a student's remote learning and say they're in the band, well, the band's a class that works on and practices. So how would that work? Because they wouldn't be attending that.
We want to do what's best for our kids, so we're going to have to be flexible, and the practice is going to have to be after school. If we're allowed to. Right now, I think we've heard that they've canceled band activities or competitions. So I think sports is the next decision that's coming out, and I'll say a little bit about that later. But we're going to have to be flexible in the way we approach it. And our band teachers are meeting with parents, and some of the parents are saying, he or she couldn't really give me an answer. Well, they can because we're still waiting on guidance on what we're allowed and not allowed to do.
And then I also have the question, if you have a kid that's a Butler Tech student, that's doing for remote, all the regular stuff, but they can social distance in whatever program they're in. Are we, are they going to be allowed to come to school to do that, or it's one or the other?
You mean for the lab work?
Yes.
They can, one, for their Butler Tech classes, they will be allowed to do whatever Butler Tech determines they're doing. We will not eliminate them from any of that. They will have flexibility. Do they want to take the Northwest courses online and do remote? Or do they want to do them in person? If they do them in person, we will provide transportation back to Colrain, back to here, or up to D Russell Lee and back home like we always have. We have to be very flexible with those kids because their hours are so important, and we can't mess with their certifications and what they need for graduation. Staffing, their safety is our number-one goal along with our students, obviously. Staff will wear masks, just like you guys have already brought up, that is a requirement. Some I saw today in our summer literacy program had a mask plus a shield on. But I can also tell you, once the kids were in their six-foot seats, they took their shield off, they took their mask off because they saw the significance, importance of literacy and being able to see and hear what people are saying. This is very difficult if you're a kid who has vision problems or hearing problems and you have this in front of you. So that's why we are allowing our teachers to take them off if they want. Now, there might be some exceptions where our staff's not comfortable. So we will provide a see-through board or a shield where if it's a speech teacher, we can adapt to their needs and do what they need to do. But this makes it very difficult. We, when we build our schools, if you guys all go back to whether you're on the board or not, we needed good lighting, we needed windows, we needed kids to be able to see. We put in sound systems in every building for hearing, and a teacher can wear a, or in our new buildings, they can wear a mic if they need to. So the masks do cause problems. I'm taking it off now in case somebody is watching and interpreting what I'm saying because I like to meet all ADA requirements. But we feel like in the distance we are here, and in the classroom, kids can take off their masks while they're at their desk and teachers can. But as a teacher moves to assist, they won't get down like they used to, but they'll stand behind them and be able to watch what they're doing and work with them that way. And I don't want everybody to think that our teachers are 100% ready to come back. There is some fear out there, and I do not blame them. I'm getting letters that come in, some will put names on and some are not. You don't have to hide who you are if you have fears about COVID. I think the majority of us in society have fears because we don't know what's truth and what's not. But we do know that it can lead to death, and that's the thing that makes this difficult. But we support our teachers, we want to work with them. And if you look at the real push, why we wanted kids back to school, our kids need our teachers, they're the experts, they're so good at what they do. And it's just not the same at home. And some of our parents did a great job. That's not a complaint whatsoever. But they have lives they have to do and things they have to do and a stress level. I am more worried about our K through 5 kids. They just need social interaction. You have to learn how to interact. You need those play skills. You need your literacy, you need your math. We need them back, we want them back. But that doesn't mean that Todd Bowling is speaking for every teacher who might live with their parents and be fearful of what they might bring home to them. So we have put out a job posting for remote learning, and depending on how many kids we get, we will try to fill those positions accordingly. But that is very difficult. It's going to be the last-minute push to where July 30th, we might have 3,000 at, say, remote. I don't know. If you look at last Thursday, it was kind of scary because we almost all thought we were going to purple. And so I wanted to talk a little bit about that, too. Well, Mr. Bowling, some people are going by the color codes. Well, I wanted to talk about the color codes. From what my understanding is, meeting weekly with the Hamilton County, Butler County health officials and listening to the governor, it is a signal that our hospitals are getting full and the beds are getting full for CCU and ICU. And that sometimes the beds are getting full, not because of 20 or 8-year-olds to 50-year-olds. Sometimes it could be a retirement center in a county who had 60 cases break out. And if you're in a retirement center, they need to go there. So our health officials in Hamilton and Butler are saying, well, let's discuss each situation. What caused this to go to purple? Were we seeing that it was people 20 to 40 going in, or was it something else causing that? And so I think that's good advice that we have to look. But the coding system is our hospitals are getting full, our beds are getting full. We're getting to a critical state where we may not be able to service everyone. So to tie our plan into that is not what we're going to have to do or be effective with. We're going to tie our plan into, what's our staffing situation? I'm not going to tell you at this time, I can't guarantee you every school will stay open. I will guarantee you that there's a good possibility one school may shut down, and it's not because of a large amount of COVID cases with our kids. It might be we don't have the staffing to keep the building open. Everything we do and every decision we make, however, goes through Kiva Bryce, our district nurse, and then she communicates with Hamilton County Health Department, and we will work closely with them. The other thing I want the parents to understand is that some parents said, I'm not participating in tracing. Do not have them call me. One, I don't control that. They're going to call you. And if you're not going to participate in the tracing, then you cannot attend our school. You must go to remote learning. Because the tracing is the most important piece to see who else is involved and to slow down the spread of COVID.
The other thing, I got kind of a statement question, but with the color coding that the governor puts out, isn't some of the data points that they use to trigger the color coding? There's a lag time of like 10, 12, 14 days sometimes?
Today, if you read what the Enquirer put out, now they're seeing fever is not really a symptom, and it's 20 to 40-year-olds were the last spike. But he's still looking at keeping us red for now. But it changes daily. It's changed since last Thursday. That's the hard part with the color system. But we have to have the medical care professionals available to take care of folks when you get sick, and that's an important piece. Another question we've had is lunch. What's lunch look like? Well, some are going to be in the class, some are going to be in the lunchroom, some might be in the gymnasium, some might be in the library. It's wherever we can serve the kids a hot meal and have six-foot spacing. Will my kids get to sit next to their friends every day? No. We will do six-foot spacing as we stand in line and get our food. You cannot do where they serve themselves. Self-serve is out, so they have to be served a meal or the meal brought to the classroom. Restroom, it's going to look different. It's going to be every six feet. You're going to have to take turns. We will try to limit transitions of them by themselves, but that's the reality of what has to happen. And that's where your pictures are going to pop up. I saw Johnny and Jim standing on the corner, and they were closer than six feet. Well, those are the things we will address, but we can't guarantee that won't happen. I am concerned about our parents and water bottles. If I could offer one suggestion, anybody coming to school, bring a water bottle. All water fountains will be turned off. We are placing water bottle fillers in all our schools because we don't want them touching this stuff. Now, along with that, whether you're touching a door or a doorknob, or we will have hand sanitizers everywhere. We will provide PPEs. Some people say, well, it defeats the purpose if you're pushing and pumping. Well, yes, you are, but as soon as you sanitize your hands, you're okay. It didn't matter that you touched it to begin with because you killed the germs. So we're putting those in the classroom. We're trying to put more than one in the classroom because the last thing you want is a line that's not six feet apart at the hand sanitizer. So school will look different. If you're talking K through 5, every day is going to begin with just personal hygiene, spacing, reminders, wash your hands, and hopefully that will translate into the kids practicing those same skills at home. One thing I wanted to throw out was sports and lessons that have been learned through sports. And I see this starting to affect schools. So a high school had a player test positive, and they were just shut down for 14 days. And it was a high school in our state.
The whole team?
The whole team. Didn't trace, didn't do anything. The school said, I don't know what to do, we're just shutting down. When they reported back 14 days later, 19 tested positive. Let's take School B. School B had somebody test positive, did not do anything. Tested positive on one day, removed that player only. Everybody was back to practice the next day. They have yet to have another case. So what I'm saying is there is no
And they're testing these kids every day?
Yeah. Well, no, they're not testing them every day, but anybody who is symptomatic, then they send home to get tested. And they're not seeing
So they're not, they're not doing their temperatures every day?
They're doing temperatures every day as required by Ohio High School, but they're not doing a physical COVID test, is what I meant. But yes, our sports teams are doing a great job. They're keeping track where the kids are. They know what groups they're in, every minute of practice they're at. They are temperature checking once they get there, and then they're requiring temperature checking before they leave their house. We are finding great success with bringing our teams together right now because they see it as I need to watch out for each other. And so they're not going around and going to their usual places. They're not going out traveling. If they do go out, they have a mask on. They're taking pride in making sure their teammates are safe. But my example is to more show you, we can do the best we can. I just need everybody to understand, in a full return to school, practices are distinct, but things are still going to happen. And that's why I can't say we can guarantee anything with a full return. But we can guarantee you, we will follow our guidelines daily. We will hold people accountable if they're not wearing masks, if they're not practicing social distancing. We will get the parents and guardians involved because what it comes down to is if kids aren't in school, parents can't work, and that affects families' lives. I still think that it's very important that folks understand the value of coming to school. It's not just reading, math, social studies and science. As you heard earlier, physical education is important, health education, art, music, foreign languages, career center programs. We need our kids with us so we can educate them. We will limit visitors. Some people are asking, will we have an open house? Not so sure we'll have an open house. It kind of depends on where we are as a county. But we have gotten so good with Zoom, you might get more people into the classroom if you could do a Zoom and then have the camera so it moves around the Zoom and try to work those things out. We will use our teachers for that, see what their comfortable level is, see what the principals want to do with their building, leaderships, teams, but try to be consistent from school to school as we make those decisions. But as far as visitors, the only visitors will be allowed in school is if a parent has to be called because of an altercation or something.
Todd, when you were mentioning sports, school starts, football team, whatever, baseball team, who's ever. What about the fans? Are you letting the fans get in, or are they playing their games without anybody in the stands?
So that's a good point, and one of the things that we've been asked to do, at least the GMC anyway, is they are meeting and determining what's an appropriate amount of folks in the stand. So as people know, in this district, when Northwest plays Mount Healthy, there's a big crowd there. When St. X comes to Colrain, big crowd there. Understand, a lot of tickets are sold at these games. And if you're going to limit the amount of tickets that can, you limit the amount of income that comes into the school. That's how we pay for some of our other sports. So they are devising a plan. I could see anywhere from 40, 50, 60, or 70% allowed in the stands, sitting on the marked appropriate places unless you're a family. And then if you're a family, you would be allowed to sit together like you are at restaurants. But then they've got to decide a lot of other guidelines that are similar. So if we're following, and remember, we've got four schools in Hamilton County, and the rest of them are in Butler County. So are the Butler County and Hamilton County officials saying the same things when a positive test comes back and quarantining and all that stuff?
Okay. And what about, you go to any one of these football games and you have a bunch of people standing on the sidelines that aren't players? Is everybody going to be off of the sidelines that's not a player or a coach on the
You'll have to have a pass to be on the field, but they've already changed some things. There's, you've seen the water machines that everybody takes a squirt, that's gone. You have to have your own water bottle. Your name's got to be on it, just regulating that, trying to figure that out. But yeah, when people are standing down there, they But yeah, when people are standing down there, they need a pass and they're not going to be standing side by side at six feet, so you don't have many things. And then to go to the seats is very difficult because this, now you're like loading the bus, you're passing people to get up to your seat and then you're passing people to come back out. And you get into the fall and it gets cold and you get allergies and you get sneezing and you get colds and it's just hoping you can control that crowd. I worry about sports and what we'd be allowed to do, but I am going to fight as hard as I can for our kids because some of them are seniors and this is their last chance. The only okay we've heard on sports right now is volleyball and golf, they have been approved, that could change, and they are looking at the rest of the sports. So football, soccer, contact sports is what they're calling them.
We've had this, we've had discussions with marching band where it's already been mentioned that where you were talking about limiting the attendance at football games, for example, correct? That our marching band would not go, would not travel away because that'd be 60 members that would be taking up spots from spectators for that home team. And vice versa, we wouldn't have, you know, visiting bands coming to our field because that would be another, you know, six-
But my concern is allowing all these people on the sidelines that aren't, that aren't with the team.
That we can control easily.
Yeah.
And that's reporters. I mean, if there's going to be a cameraman, there's got to be a designated area, they can't go up and down the sideline, walking into people like they always do, pulling their cords and so on and so forth. Things have to change. The band is, think about our adults. So you're putting people in tight spaces for an hour drive and windows up in the winter and even though you have masks on, they're all on the bus. So those type of things, think about a team. It's going to be more costly because we'll probably have to change the way we move our teams. Maybe there, because they are on the bus for such a long time, could be an hour, we put one per seat and change things. But those are all good points that have to be considered and what I hope the state considers is that costs us extra money. And if we're already limiting who can buy a ticket, then we're limiting our funding for those programs.
If we're used to sending three buses for the football and then two buses for the band to transport, you know, take the band off those kids and that's two buses that are available to space out the football team, for example.
Yeah, very much so.
So I assume, Todd, that, you know, you know, every year at Colrain, they have the little kids come in, that's done?
I would say until we get COVID together, bring in the little cards and the mighty knights, it's just not going to happen. Elementary knights, middle school knights, that's all different and all changing.
I think we got to remember, and I understand that football pays for everything, but if your, your son or daughter's in the band and we're doing all this stuff, making them stay home, they're not going to get to do band competition, so basically they'll just be playing, what, five home games or whatever, you know?
That's the reality.
Then do they still pay the same pay to play, you just cut half their season? I mean, there's a lot of things that, and it-
Well, in spacing, I think they have to have a big part of the stands, whether it's the visitors part or the home part, because they would need to be six feet apart as they are playing. Because sports are a little different, you'll hit, make contact, you go back, you're still exchanging things, but if you're sitting there playing for halftime or you just got to make sure you keep your spacing or whatever, so. And football only pays for sports. Band parents are phenomenal with fundraising, they do a great job, so they raise their funds and do it right.
Has anybody talked about not allowing visiting teams' fans there? That way we can kind of deal with the spacing for the home team?
They have not. I think too many people rely on the funding and the gate and that becomes the hard part. If you're not going to bring in fans, then you can't afford to play the sport, it's not cheap for any sport. With traveling, by the time you pay the referees, the umpires, the officials, it's very expensive. So as I wrap up, again, lots of questions are going to come. Schools will be releasing their personal guidelines in the next couple of days. That's where to start with your questions and then we are here to answer any question if you don't want to start there, we'll be glad to take the questions and the answers. We are working on electives at the high school level, making sure every kid gets an opportunity to take their foreign language, the math they need. Remember that our athletes, whether they get to play or not, they still have goals of playing in college and you have to meet the NCA requirements for classes. And same for our band members. We've had lots of band members in this district on March with Ohio State's band and other places. So a lot of things, we got to make sure they're there. We want to work on GPAs, we want them to get the AP CCP courses so they can go to college and have less to pay for or get full rights for. So all of those things are being looked at. We are looking at art, music, PE, being outside as much as possible, weather permitting, even other classes, just to get that spacing, that movement, that protocol out there. Restrooms will change, lunch will change, it may be different every day. Phase-in schedules are another big part of the calendar, if you read the attachment, starting with the little ones first or sixth graders at the middle school or ninth graders and then bring in at a grade level each time because each day you're getting used to, oh, there's more and more people in this building, I got to figure this out. But I just want our parents to know that nobody in our school district faults you for any choice you make. If you choose remote, then we got to do a really good job, make sure your kid gets the best experience for remote. If you choose in-person, we will do our best to make sure they're safe, they're secure, we're following protocols and that we're holding folks accountable as we do that. And then lastly, our employees, it's difficult, there's a lot of stress involved in this. So we will not only worry about the safety protocols for our kids, but our teachers and talking to them and making them feel supported and secure, listening to them, hey, this really, I'm not liking the way this interaction is going, working with their buildings to try to get things fixed. It's difficult. But if we're all supportive of each other and we all do what we can to make each other safe, then I think this will work the best it can. And I just think we have to be flexible is the key word for the parents, for our employees and for our kids. Flexible, 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 things can change daily, things can change monthly, but we got to get through this and we got to get back to what's best for kids and that's being in school, so.
I have one question for you.
Yes.
How are we, and I know that some of this is just now kind of finalizing, how are we going to engage the PTA to maybe help?
We've done surveys for all parents and staff and already gotten their feedback and then when the buildings roll out their plans, they'll start with their BLTs, which is their own staff members, and then they'll bring in the PTAs to get feedback and bounce things off of. And we have the ability to survey at any time to get a feel for how things are going.
Darryl, is the staff have the same deadline as students as far as if there's medical issues or reasons, you know, that they're not comfortable coming back to the-
How many have you gotten back that said they don't want to come back to the schools and teach?
It's not necessarily because we don't want to come back, they have fears and there are specific concerns they have, so we're going through one at a time and addressing those concerns on whether there are accommodations that might make it more reasonable for them to be in the space based on their specific medical issue they have. So it's literally a conversation by conversation, one person at a time. That's all I have.
You have a question?
I have a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Would this be a good time to discuss what we want our next meeting to look like on August 10?
That's up to you, if you throw out anything you want, it's your guys' meeting.
Right, so yeah, basically my question for the rest of the board is, is, you know, do we want to meet like this next time or do we want to open it up to in-person? Is that a realistic option?
I think what we would have to do if we're going to do that, we need somebody in charge of spacing. You would only have about six seats here and then somebody has to monitor who comes in and people may be in the hallway. So you might get more out of watching it than being here because of spacing, but-
How many are you allowed to have in a meeting? 10?
Right now, it's still 10.
There's 10 in the room right now.
Right, okay. So yeah, we have to follow the orders, that's the piece we get to. But we can remove some of us if people want to walk in and then people go back and forth. But anybody and can email me any question, all you got to do is put your name with it, I will read it gladly. We just, we require a name just to prove you live in the district and your address and be glad to answer any question they have.
I think the worst thing we could do is have 25 people show up and we're only letting five in and we just tick off 20.
That's a concern as well, right, yeah. How do you determine what is first come, first served?
Yeah, I don't know.
You know, what will have, somebody that really wants to be here and they're going to wait at, I don't know, what time block this morning to be sure that they get in? I don't, yeah.
It becomes difficult and we don't know where we'll be on the purple, the red scheme by then.
It seems like they have pretty good participation between Wecross.TV and, you know, the Facebook Live.
We're getting more views now than we ever had people come in in-person and watch it on the replay. So we're getting great feedback this way and it's getting in more households than ever, which to me is the key.
And when people are watching it like on the replay, are people calling in with questions to you?
I'll get emails constantly.
Okay.
It's nonstop seven days a week.
Okay.
And they're all good questions, there is no bad question.
So we'll play it by year for the intent as far as us gathering here?
I think we should have the meetings here.
Yeah.
I do.
Something pops up that would deter us from having it if we went to a different-
My question was more is like, do we, you know, what's it going to take to open it back up to the-
Orders from the governor and the county health department. Because just a reminder, they made it through December, that meetings could be virtual. Some are choosing to do in-person, which is ordered, some are not, so.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Four member comments, Joe?
Just one, and it's echoing and reemphasizing what probably we already talked about. But I am concerned about the students and the parents as far as sending their kids to school, but I'm also equally concerned with the teachers, the bus drivers, the food, folks, the custodians. They're in the trenches and they're in immediate contact with these kids. I already met with Darryl and if any of these folks, if you fit into any of these categories, classified or certified, and you have concerns, please give Darryl a call. It's very important. Thank you.
I agree with exactly what Joe said. I mean, if you've got a question, you've got any concerns, call Darryl, call Todd, you know, and, you know, we'll try and work things out and, you know, get things rolling. But yeah, I, yeah, if you choose to do remote learning, absolutely. I mean, like you said, Todd, you know, everybody has, you know, an opinion on this and I think we'll do a good job of teaching the kids at remote and the kids that are going to come to school, so.
That's it.
Yeah, I'd just like to, you know, echo their concerns as well and also like to just say that, you know, I have a student in the district right now, so I am one of those that needs to make a decision on whether, you know, my student's going to attend in-person or remote learning. And I would just like to say that to all of those that have to make that decision, you know, if you choose to send your student to school, you know, we're going to do what we can to keep them safe and I applaud you for making that decision. And if you choose to do remote learning in the same manner, I applaud you for making that decision for your child. It's not an easy decision by any means. And thank you.
Thanks.
I meant to say this at our last meeting, but that 7:30 AM, my brain wasn't going as good as it should. Just want to congratulate Susan Smith. First of all, I want to thank her for the 18 years in the district. She and I were very fortunate, we knew her as Ms. Abfeld, she was English teacher for our daughter and it was wonderful watching her grow as a teacher into assistant principal and then ultimately being the principal of Northwest High School where she did a remarkable job. Just want to wish her the best of luck. I know she's already headed to Michigan and close to family and gets to go back to her alma mater, so I certainly congratulate her for that, but did want to wish her, send very well wishes. And then congratulate Joe Pollitt. Joe is going to do a great job. Susan left that building in great hands and Joe's going to do a great job. Joe did an awesome job when he was the AD over there and got to see the field come into fruition and I'm just excited to see him become the building leader at Northwest High School. So congratulations and best wishes to both of them. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. I mean, I think everybody has said, kind of wrapped it up. I just want to thank our leadership team for, you know, listening to Todd speak about the details about putting together a safe environment for our kids. We don't even, we don't even remotely understand how many details that are associated with keeping our kids safe and we'll find more. And, you know, the document, the rollout document is like 10, 12 pages and I'm sure that that will grow as we figure things out and keep trying to find ways to protect the kids. So first and foremost, thank you for going to this level of detail. The other thing I'd just say, we can't emphasize enough for the parents to be flexible and grant us some latitude because even from, clearly if you turn the TV on, you hear that there are eight million different decisions about this COVID pandemic. Everybody has to have some latitude with each other. If you have concerns, please forward them to the district in whatever means you're most comfortable with. And to our staff, our frontline staff, you know, the educators, you know, you work a special magic with kids and we're going to do our best to not impede that magic that you work, which causes our kids to grow up to be who they are. And with that, that's all I have. Turn the motion to a chair in the meeting?
Someone.
Second. Motion in a second. And that vote passes five to zero. Thank you, everybody, for our online folks that are watching. If you have any questions, please forward them to our district.